With or without corrections of the July 23 meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, is a motion to approve by Selectman Devans, is there a second?
Second.
Selectman Adams, any corrections? Not hearing any, all those in favor of accepting the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's four zero. Next is, we have our announcements, and we have a couple. In the spirit of the Olympics, I just wanted to make note that the Police Department got a bronze medal in the Crispens House softball tournament. They came in third place. That's not in your packet, Phil, it was some information that I-
No, I was just checking the other one that you have because I have a concern-
That I shared. And I think that there was no performance-enhancing drugs or anything like that involved, so it was legitimate bronze medal. And I did play against them, they were a pretty good team, so congratulations, Chief.
Yeah, and I'd also like to add that oftentimes you put a weakest player out in right field, and Chief Sullivan was prowling right field with cat-like prowess. I'm sure they thought he wouldn't have many opportunities, but he had many, many opportunities and was flawless on every one of them.
And Selectman Adams was one of the umpires for the day, so it was a good time had by all. Want to read to you a letter, this is to the Chief of Police.
Don't include that.
Okay. Basically, it was complimenting both the whole department, but in specific Detective Tom Hammond, and that was with regard to a case in which he was very persistent and it led to a successful, I guess prosecution of a matter. So the person was very complimentary of the department and Detective Hammond. Next announcement is the, with regard to Reed Street, and I'll read that, this is effective August 10th. The Goffstown Sewer Commission announces sewer construction on Reed Street. Work will begin on Monday, August 13th, which is today, and continue Monday through Friday for about two weeks. And so for those of you who don't know where Reed Street is, it's very close to Maple Avenue Elementary School, and it's where the, we have the senior apartments, senior citizen apartments, so that's about a two-week job there. Are there any other announcements? I do have one other, there was a scheduled concert sponsored by both the Parks and Recreation Department and the Goffstown Lions Club, and as luck would have it, the forecast is for rain and thunderstorms on Saturday. And in speaking with both the Director of Parks and Rec and the event promoter, we've decided to postpone that, and we're contemplating having it during the pumpkin regatta weekend, but we're going to contact Main Street to see if that's okay, and if it is, then we'll proceed in that vein. So there will be no concert this coming Saturday.
I just had one thing, and I wanted to personally compliment Public Works, where they worked at, they performed on the installation of the water line for Grassmere Town Hall. Jeff Sarette, I believe it was Jeff that was in charge, and Mike Hillhouse, but them and the entire crew and the work that they've done, they were able to come in underneath the driveway, and they didn't even have to, the ramp didn't even have to get disturbed, but they brought the line into it, into the building. And all the design work that the guys did, and all the work was really to be commended all of them.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll move, I'm sorry, Collins.
DPW update? Sure, all right. Several things going on, first the Maste Road paving project. Brock's finished all of milling and shimming last week. The side streets and driveways have been trimmed, that means they've been saw cut so that it can accept the final coat of pavement, so it'll all be flush. Raising of structures began last Friday and will continue this week. That's the process of raising the catch basin manhole, frames and grates, as well as the water gates are shut off so that they'll eventually be flush with the finished pavement. East Coast signals began installing the traffic loops in the pavement, you may have seen some of those as you drove along Maste Road this week. In other projects, East Dunbarton Road drainage work was completed this week, and the reclamation of the old pavement is scheduled for this coming Wednesday. Selectman Devans had just mentioned the work that was done at the Grassmere Town Hall. And then finally, the Pine Ridge Drainage, that project has been completed, all the areas have been finished loamed and seeded, and have the signs removed by the end of last week, I believe they're all gone, I didn't see any at least on my way down today. And post-construction surveys will be sent out on Monday, so that's an update on DPW activities.
Thank you. Next is an opportunity for those who are in the audience to present any public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to be heard? Okay, there isn't anyone. Next up, we have Police Chief Sullivan, and Chief Sullivan is here to discuss our reaccreditation with Kalia.
Thank you. I'd ask my accreditation manager, Michelle Proventure, and my assistant to come up, Denise Roberts, please.
Who is it?
She looked very familiar. This past, we've just received our seventh award for reaccreditation. We've been at this since 1992, which we received our first award, and continued through the process since then. The process is a comprehensive review of all facets of our agency, and compare it to nationally-recognized and accepted standards and practices of our law enforcement profession. This past April, we welcomed two independent Kalia assessors to come to our agency, evaluate our operations, personnel, policies, procedures, and seek input from the public as to how we are fulfilling our mission. During the last week of July, we attended the final hearing before the Commission of Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, Kalia, for the final review. I am pleased to announce that the Goffstown Police Department was awarded its seventh award for advanced accreditation with meritorious distinction. People ask why accreditation, and I think the answer is why wouldn't we? The standard is in addition to addressing the high liability areas such as firearms and vehicle driving pursuits, et cetera, also address solid and defendable personnel practices, accounting, oversight, auditing, development and goals, and not only seeking, but acting on the feedback from our community. While this is an honor, a true reflection of our entire agency, that we not only uphold the 374 standards, but we embrace them each and every day. With that, there are two people that deserve to be recognized, again, Michelle Proventure and Denise Roberts, who took all this good work and assembled it in a professional, understandable, and accessible files so that the assessors could come in and actually remark that it's some of the best files they'd ever seen. I'd like to close with a final comment by Chief Cunningham, who is the Chief of Winston-Salem North Carolina Police Department, leaves 700 sworn officers. And his quote in the last portion of the final review, "The agency has tremendous support from other agencies, but most importantly, its citizens. The Goffstown Police Department delivers world-class service to its citizens." And that was in the final portion of our presentation. I think it speaks highly of the whole department as a whole and the service that we provide to the community, so I'll thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to take one minute to personally thank the department and everybody that works on it. I've been on the board, and I attended the first time that we received, when we first received the first accreditation back in 92, as the chief mentioned, and going back then, we had the, our same two that worked on the files back then, it was Mike French, chief, who retired as chief, who was the accreditation officer that was responsible and originally made the original presentation to the Board of Selectmen back then. I was on the Budget Committee at the time. But the question, I just wanted to add, when you say, you know, why not, why accreditation? One of the things that I, as a selectman, can appreciate is, you know, when we watch on the news, things that happen all over the country, things that happen in all parts of the country, and a particular police department goes in, and afterwards, when you're looking at what happens and how it goes through the process, through the court process, and when it's finally resolved, and you look at issues of how evidence was overlooked, or how people came into a crime scene, and they just came in and they didn't understand how to go in, and somebody, because of how they handled themselves, the case became a disaster, and the result is everything, not what you would expect when you would see that crime. And the thing is, is that the training that our department has, it's how to approach the crime scene, how to go through it, what to do, what not to do, and how to make sure that the evidence is not compromised throughout the case. And I have to say that that's one of the top things that we have to look forward to ours, our department, and I just want to thank everybody for all the work that you've done all these years. Thank you.
If I, I just wanted to add a couple of comments as well, on behalf of the board. I think it goes without saying that we're very proud of the Goffstown Police Department as a board. Our community is very proud of the Goffstown Police Department, and I think that's evidenced in another accreditation from Kalia. You know, there's a lot of talk about community policing, I come from the New York City area, and it means when you're proactive, when you're involved in the community, you're able to address situations before they happen. And I think it's very evident in Goffstown that there is a strong sense of community with our Police Department, and it kind of goes both ways, and that's something special. I don't think it's everywhere, but I know it's here, here in Goffstown, so on behalf of the board, thank you for all that you do. And then just, you know, echoing what Chief Sullivan stated, special thank you to Michelle and Denise. You probably don't know this, but, you know, privately, many times publicly, the chief does speak so highly of the two of you and how much work that you put into this in terms of countless hours and nights and weekends doing all this extremely, how should I say, arduous task of compiling all these things. And we're very fortunate to have employees like you in the town of Goffstown, who it means more than just, you know, collecting a paycheck. This is something that's pride in what you do, and pride in where you work, and you exemplify that, and we're very, very pleased to have you work for the town of Goffstown, and the community appreciates all that you do. So thank you. With that being said, we have the chief here, we also have our DPW Director, Carl Quorum, and we're going to be talking about nighttime paving. So I'd like to bring the two of you up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Back when we awarded the paving contract to Brock's Industries, I know a couple of you raised the question of nighttime paving. At the time, we really felt like we should try to do it during the daylight. Everybody we had talked to, you just end up with a better product when it's light out and you can see. After getting involved in the milling and shimming operation, Brock's Industries actually approached us and recommended that we consider doing it at night. Their reasoning, and just to tell the board, if we had bid it, requiring night work, there would have been a premium put on night paving, so it's not something they just lightheartedly do. However, with the amount of traffic, particularly the turning movements, all of the truck traffic and everything going in and out of that center lane into all the businesses, we really saw it on the shim coat that there's just no way to keep people off it long enough for it to really cure. And they're concerned with, you know, getting it rutted up right from the get-go, as soon as they put the finished coat of asphalt on it. I don't know if you've driven through it, but it's already 100% better just with the shim on it, when we get that final asphalt, you get all the structures raised and get that final asphalt on it, I think we're going to have a great product. But that's their concern, is with the amount of traffic down there, and particularly the turning traffic, they just think that we'll end up with a much better finished product if we consider doing it at night. They're guesstimating, I'm going to say five nights. It all depends how it goes, you know, weather-wise, temperature-wise, but they're guesstimating it's probably five nights' worth of paving to do the entire stretch. And we have sat down Police and Brock's and DPW, and we've talked about traffic detail and doing it in the dark, we certainly want to have blue lights flashing, so we've kind of worked out a plan for that, and getting our hands on some light towers, but if the board's amenable to it, that's what we would like to try to do, and it would be, if the weather holds this week and we get all the structures raised, we're targeting, starting Sunday night, August 19th. So next week, we would get it done, and we've got the traffic loops at this point are all installed and functioning, and we've hopefully got the paint contractor lined right up. They recommend waiting a couple of weeks to let the asphalt cure before you paint it. However, with school starting September 4th, we're doing what we can to get as much of it painted around the school as we can before school starts. So that's the plan.
Selectman Adams?
I had a couple of questions. You said that had nighttime paving been in the contract, it would have come at a premium? So is Brock's proposal to do it without any add-on cost?
That's correct.
Okay. My other question was, had you done anything to survey the businesses and the residents to see how they would feel about nighttime paving, just to get a sense of a pulse of the community?
Well, not the residents, but when we talked to the businesses before this whole thing started, almost 100% of them said, could you pave it at night?
Well, I'm sure they would, right? Businesses are closed, but out of the residents, Phil.
And we haven't heard from any residents, good or bad or indifferent, you know.
Have we done anything to reach out to them, to make them aware of the-
Not other than the website and advertising this discussion on this meeting.
And on this, the results of this meeting would be put out to NEXOL, et cetera, so.
Okay, I think it's important to take those steps to let folks know, so there's no surprises.
Yeah, you know, we've got message boards down there at either end, and we'll, we'd put something on there as well, just to give people the heads up. Either way, if we don't do the night paving, the paving would still be that week at this point, that's when we're in the schedule, but it-
So what hours would we be talking about?
They're talking about starting at eight o'clock at night, and trying to get out of the road right around six in the morning before things get rolling.
That long of a 10 hour.
With the 80-plus manhole covers that have to be raised, Carl, how does that-
Almost 200.
Well, I see, I see the numbers of the actual manholes, you've got them started, one through, whatever, the highest one I saw was like 80 or 90. How does that play into the plan? I mean, are we on schedule with getting everything raised, will that-
You know, they just started them Friday, so we'll see how it goes. Now that they kind of have a system down, we'll see how they do the next couple of days, but they feel they can get them done. We expressed our nervousness when we met with them Friday, so they can always bring another crew in if they had to do.
My other question I have is, before this new layer of asphalt gets down, they're going to sweep and clean everything up, because I won't say they did the best when they put the shim coat down. I saw firsthand as to what was left under there a little bit, and, I mean, I hope they pay a little bit more attention to the finer details when it comes time to-
Yeah, we also saw that, and we had that discussion, so.
Yeah, I mean, I saw, I saw some of the manhole covers, I mean, they put the asphalt down, then they come by, rake it away, and then they chisel away the extra asphalt that was there that should have been taken away. I mean, it's just, I will go on record as saying, I think they need to be a little bit more careful about their final, you know-
That's in the minutes, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I mean, I live in Pernodville, I see it every day, I watch him every day, I don't say hi, I don't introduce myself, but I'm just the guy going up and down the street, you know?
You don't have a hard hat?
No, I don't have a hard hat.
Not yet.
I haven't-
First, you think.
I haven't got a hard hat, and I haven't got a yellow jacket that says DPW on the back. No, back on the serious side, I mean, the finer details of the project need to be paid a little bit more attention. I asked Sue today, I mean, they're digging up in front of Family Dollar, I mean, that's the second or third time they've dug up in front of there, right?
That's not them, though, that's Family Dollar.
No, but still, I mean, you would think that somebody would have got it right.
You would think.
Exactly.
The second time, they should have got it right, but they still didn't.
Exactly.
That's an issue with the site contractor.
Now, we've got to, I mean, we've got to make adjustments to that, and-
Just for the record, the town's not making any adjustments?
No, no, no.
It's all on the site contractor, that's an issue.
I understand, I understand, but I mean-
The site guy not taking direction.
You're told everything is done, ready to go, and I drive by, they're digging up the freshly laid, put down, I don't know, we put it down or they put it down.
They put it down.
And I mean, you know, but, I mean-
Yeah, they made assumption, after we told them exactly what was going to happen, they made assumptions of what they thought would happen, and if we would have just blended to them, we'd have a hump there and the drainage wouldn't work, so we made them rip it out and redo it, much to their chagrin, but they aren't doing it.
It's well underway, I saw it being done, but I just, I wanted to comment on the final product, as far as if they're short cutting, shortcuts now, what are they going to, what are we going to be faced with when the actual final product comes? I just, all I wanted to address was that.
Yep, yeah, and just like I said, to be clear, that's not Brock's or the town's contractor, it has nothing to do with that. But your observations on the sweeping and the cleanup, we've made the same observation, and we did address that with them.
Thank you.
Thank you. The time that, the dates that you mentioned are for sure?
No, that's what we've got scheduled now. You look at the weather forecast for this week, Wednesday looks like rain, that would screw everything.
Okay, thing, reason why I ask, I don't have a problem with the nighttime paving, as long as it's done in August, because middle to the end of August, many people are away. It's a slow time for many businesses. The only business that I would have a concern about would be Maste Road, because of the time of year and people in a rush for projects and construction. And the only other thing is going on to six o'clock, I would make sure that I would touch base with Maste Road lumber, because they have the largest volume of large trucks coming in, and some of them may get there, I'm not sure what the timing is, but a lot of times some of them will come, and you'll see them parked out there waiting for that chain to be taken off so they can deliver. And the only other thing was going to be some of the delivery trucks for the gas stations or something that may come around at that time, just-
What I'll do is, you know, if the board's amenable to this tomorrow, I'll send out an e-blast to all the businesses and just ask them to touch base if they have any issues like that, and we'll get the word out. You know, we all want to get it done, we all want to get it done before school starts, so if weather hits, I'm sure they'll do what they can to not slip the schedule too bad, but it's time of year when everybody's trying to get stuff done, so it's, we just got to fingers crossed that the weather holds. Any other questions?
Yeah, just one thing, because I think the biggest issue, one of the big concerns that we had was tying up Maste Road in the daytime, and I think that this will help alleviate that, that issue, because you'll be able to drive over it by that time of the morning, you're not going to keep the lane closed, are you?
There were some we were looking at restricting, I think, the traffic plan, did Megan, you didn't circulate that, did you? There is a draft of the press release and the traffic plan that Megan sent us late today or midday.
I got a conceptual today.
I can forward that to you, though, just so you can see it, because we did lay out what our, what the traffic flow and the traffic plan would be, and we talked about starting at the Manchester end, so that we're working away from the school.
Just make sure that it's, that there's good communication with the businesses, because everything that I heard was, as long, the sooner this is done, the better, and that's why everybody agreed to, let's get it done, so it's done, and if the end of this month comes, we're done, we're out of there, they'll be, everybody will be happy.
Yep, believe me, we all want it.
I know that.
I had one question, Carl. With regard to town oversight, I mean, traditionally, you know, if it was during the day, we're out there, and we're kind of observing and making sure that they're fulfilling their obligations, is it safe to assume that we're going to have staff that's going to be working the six, whatever, at 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions? With that, you will need approval from the board, so I will accept a motion to proceed with nighttime paving, if that is-
Make the motion that the nighttime paving for the Pernodville section of the 114 Maste Road section be allowed to be started at night from eight o'clock till six o'clock in the morning.
Okay. And, yeah, we're also, we'll do that separately. Okay. So I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Assuming not. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll also need to-
I'll make a motion to waive the noise ordinance for the paving in Pernodville.
For that same period of time?
Yeah, in conjunction with that, weighing, that's what I say, in conjunction with the paving, in case there is a delay, something happens because of the rain or the weather, that's another day, so it's for the purposes of the paving project.
I'll second that.
Seconded. Any questions or comments relative to that motion? Not hearing any. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's four zero, motion passes. And thank you both. Carl, I know this has been a long one, so hopefully we'll-
Well, I want to thank the folks from the Police Department for helping to make it as painless as possible, because it is helpful.
All right, and hopefully it'll be, it'll be beautiful when it's all said and done. So it already is a lot better as it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's about 6:25, for those of you who are watching on television, and without any objections, we do have our auditors from Melonson Heath and Company here, and without any objection, I'm going to ask them to come on up and join us tonight. We have Frank Byron, and Frank, you've been here before, and Pat Mohan. Pat, I don't know if you've been before us, have you?
Last year I was here.
You were here as well, okay.
Yep, just not necessarily here.
Okay.
I was in the front row.
Well, welcome, gentlemen, and thank you for coming tonight, and you're going to be discussing the annual financial statements and your overall audit of the town of Goffstown, so without further ado, take her away.
Okay. My name's Frank Byron, I'm the President of Melonson Heath CPAs, and we performed audit services for the calendar year ended December 31st, 2011, and I'd like to walk through the highlights of those financial statements with you this evening. If you have any questions as I'm going along, please feel free to ask. If the questions get too difficult, that's why Patrick is here. Patrick was the manager out here during the audit, so he spent a lot of time out here on a day-to-day basis, so he's pretty familiar with the books. If you could turn your attention to the first page after the table of contents, this is the independent auditor's report, and this is what we were hired to do, is provide an opinion as to whether the rest of the financial statements in this document are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And this report is what we would call a clean opinion, there are no exceptions, which is the same as the town has received in the past. So in our opinion, as the outside auditors, these financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This year, the town did not expend over a half a million dollars of federal funds as it did in the year prior, and because of that, there was no single audit required. The single audit, compliance audit kicks in if you spend over $500,000 of federal funds, so that was not necessary this year. After these first couple pages, beginning on page three, next section is called the Management Discussion and Analysis, and it actually runs from pages three through 10, and it's a narrative summary of the results of operation for the year. What it attempts to do is to put into words what the numbers say on the various financial pages. What I'd like to do is flip ahead to those number pages and talk about a lot of the same numbers that are discussed in this section. So that would take us to page 11, which is the first of the number pages, the Statement of Net Assets, and I don't have a lot to speak on this page. I'll explain what this page, as well as the following page, is all about. These are presented on what's called the Full Accrual Basis of Accounting. So what it does is, in the first column, your governmental activities, these are all of the town's funds other than your sewer enterprise, and your sewer enterprise is reported in the second column, which is your business purpose. So in the first column, it's really a combination of your general fund and projects and trust funds, they all get consolidated into this one column. And then they get presented on that Full Accrual Basis of Accounting, which is the same basis of accounting that a business would follow. It's a little bit different than the way the town tracks its books, in that on this page, long-term assets and long-term liabilities are reported. Now, the long-term assets are what appears right above the subtotal in the middle of the page, so where you see the total assets in the first column of $48.7 million, right above that are the long-term assets, which are your capital assets, and it's broken down into two categories, land and construction in progress, those are your non-depreciable assets, and then other assets net of accumulated depreciation, and those are your depreciable assets, which include your buildings, equipment, furnishings, machinery, things like that. So this is the only place that the long-term assets appear- So this is the only place that the long-term assets appear in your financial statements. And, and the depreciable assets in the first column, which is twenty-five point one million dollars, those are being depreciated. Over the asset's useful lives. Similarly, about two-thirds way down the page, right, right above the subtotal for total liabilities. That subtotal being eleven point one million in the first column, right above that, we have non-current liabilities. And there, there are two major components that are reported, bonds payable. Of one point four million dollars for governmental activities, and then for your business-type activities, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Those are the long-term portions of your bonds payable, there's also a current portion, which appears a couple lines above that. Which represents the principal pay downs that, that will occur in, in two thousand and twelve. The, the balances in your bonds payable of one point four million dollars for your governmental and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for your, your sewer fund. Are not very high, you, you don't have a lot of debt outstanding, that, that's one thing that stands out in these numbers, is there's not a lot of debt there. For communities your size, that's a very low debt burden. The, the remaining other long-term liabilities, which appear right below that, in the first column of one million, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. There's actually three components of that for your governmental. The la- the largest of which is the other post-employment benefits. That, that's a, um, a liability that's only been around for about, uh, three years now. And it's, it's because of a, a new, uh, Government Accounting Standards Board requirement. That, that says that if, if retirees get any benefit from the health insurance program. Then the actuaries have to determine what that overall liability is, and then come up with a funding schedule, a thirty-year funding schedule to fund that. And the amount that does not get funded annually gets reported as a liability each year. So that at the end of thirty years, the entire liability will be reported if nothing gets funded. So of that one point five million dollars in that first column, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand of that is this other post-employment benefits. Now, the town doesn't actually pay anything for the retirees' health insurance benefit. But because the retirees are required by state law to be included in the same pool of, of insured. As your regular town employees, because of that, because of the fact that your retirees would normally have, be paying more for their health insurance. But they're, they're getting a lower rate because they're in the same pool with your current employees, well, they're getting a lower rate, but that means the town employees are getting a higher rate. And the town is paying a higher rate, so that's actually the subsidy, that, that's what the liability represents. And the overall liability that the actuaries came up with is about two million dollars, and that's reported on the last page of the financial statements. So eventually, that entire two million dollars will be reported as a liability on page eleven. If the town does not fund any of that post-employment benefit. You're not required to fund it, most municipalities are not doing it, um, in New Hampshire, there's new legislation. Which allows you to do that, that's, that's brand-new legislation from this past year.
That's as a trust fund, right?
In a, it would be in an irrevocable trust fund, so once the money would go there, it can't be pulled out for any reason. Which is different from a capital reserve type program.
Just so, and you may not know the answer to this one, but. The U S Post Office, is that something that they're being asked to fully fund and, and isn't that the same thing, that they're being asked to fully fund?
I do not know.
Okay.
Fully funding their retirement.
Correct, unlike what was just said, that we do not have to fully fund it upfront.
The retirement, you are, the retirement is.
But not the health?
It's an actuarially sound, and there is a big unfunded liability out there, and, and now that you mentioned that, there, there is a new G A S B. Government Accounting Standards Board, that's gonna be coming out in a couple of years, which is actually gonna require you to record a liability on your financial statements. That you haven't had to do up until now, the requirement for the pension has been similar to this other post-employment benefits. Where, where what the requirement is, is if you don't fund the amount that the actuary suggests you do, that's the amount that gets reported as a liability each year. But the pension part is going to be changing in a couple of years, and, uh, the pension, the entire unfunded amount. Is going to have to be recorded on the balance sheet as a liability going forward. So the state is going to have to tell you how much that liability is, because you probably don't know how much that liability is right now. The state right now tell, they, they, they make it known what the overall unfunded liability is, but it's not divvied up to all the municipalities, yeah. The other parts of that other liabilities, back to that number right above the, the subtotal for total liabilities, that one million, five eighty-eight. The other parts are landfill post-closure costs, the town has a landfill that's closed. And again, accounting standards require that there be post-closure annual, um, costs performed on the landfill. And that those be reported as a liability. And so that's six hundred and eighty thousand, and the last piece is compensated absences, employee compensated absences of about a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Which is employees sick in vacation time at twelve thirty-one. That summarizes this page, um, if we could turn to page thirteen. Page thirteen is the balance sheet, but this is presented on a fund accounting basis, which is more of a, a cash basis of accounting. And it's the way that the town tracks its books in its general ledger. The first column is your general fund, and then the second column is non-major, and your non-major is a consolidation of, uh, various, uh, special revenue and trust funds. In the first column though, starting from the top and working our way down, the, the very first line, which is cash and short-term investments. Of eleven point six million dollars, that is actually increased about one point one million dollars from the year before. But cash in and of itself is not necessarily a good indicator as to whether you had a good year or a bad year, cause it could be really just a matter of timing. As to when your bills get paid at the end of the year, or your, or your tax bills, um, went out at the end of the year. But it is up one point one million dollars, sounds like a lot of cash, but one thing I'd like to point out is. Very, in the very middle of the page, you'll notice the largest of the liabilities due to school district of six million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Of the cash of eleven million dollars that you have, these are monies you collected for taxes for the school district. So you owe the school district six point six million dollars, rounded to six point seven million, but because they're on a fiscal year. That's the amount that you've already collected in taxes, but will be paid out in January through June of two thousand and twelve.
Frank, Selectman Devance has a question.
Yeah, and you mentioned that through, through June, cause the question is, we're on different, uh, budget cycles.
Right.
Between the two, so I was just wondering if that hadn't affected, or actually, it's a two-part question, that portion of it. And related with that, uh, you said this was basically on a cash basis. So the cash and short-term investments will not include un, uh, taxes for tax bills that have not gone out? Or how do, how does, could you explain to us how that works? If, in other words, if it's on a cash basis, we, we're not taking into account cruel type.
Right, for, for the very first line, that cash and short-term investments of eleven point six million dollars, that's cash in the bank, period. But that's not your fund balance, we'll, we'll talk about your fund balance shortly. And, uh, you know, for your fund balance, for the most part, it's on a cash basis of accounting, which means uncollected taxes. Don't add to your fund balance, as they're presented in this report anyway. The, the second, and, and back to you, the, the different, different fiscal years between the town and the school district, that certainly has an impact on the cash balance. Because you're on a calendar year, you've collected most of the taxes through twelve thirty-one, the bills went out in the fall, you've collected most of those taxes. So the money's in hand, but because the school's on a fiscal year, half of their school year, you're, you're gonna be paying out in two thousand and twelve, so.
Thank you.
Then back towards the top, after that first line, the next line is restricted cash of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. That is capital reserve fund cash, and that's different from in the past, there's, there's a new accounting standards, again. Government Accounting Standard Board Statement Fifty-four, which says that capital reserve funds now get reported in with your general fund. For your audited financial statements, so they, they get tracked separately, and it appears separately here, and it appears separately in the fund balance section. But it does have to appear in this column now. After that, you have property taxes receivable of two point one million dollars, that's the uncollected taxes at the end of the year. There is a footnote that appears on page thirty-one that gives a breakdown by levy year of those receivables. But the bottom line is that, uh, the, the majority of that represents, all of it actually represents either the current year levy. The bills that had just gone out and were due towards the end of the year, or prior years that have, have been leaned. And because they've been leaned, they're protected, so if the properties change hands, or if the property owner files for bankruptcy. The town's still gonna collect those monies when, when the property does change hands. Those receivables of two point one million dollars are actually down about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the year before. So that, that's a positive trend from the prior year. Moving down into the liability section, some of the larger numbers, the very first liability was, which is vouchers payable, a million dollars. Those are accounts payable at the end of the year, those were pretty much paid out in January of two thousand and twelve. Crude payroll is a, a cutoff of the payroll at the end of the year, we spoke about the due to school district of six point six million. Down a little bit lower is deferred revenues, uh, one million, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand. That's the, that's an offset to the majority of the receivables above of two point one million dollars. What, what this account represents is revenues that are deferred until they're going to be collected. So of the two point one million dollars above, one point eight million dollars of those receivables are deferred. And have not been recorded as revenue yet, so the difference between that two point one million and the one point eight million of roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Did get recognized as revenue, and it's because there's another accounting rule called the sixty-day rule. That says whatever taxes you collect within sixty days of closing your books can be recorded as revenue. So that's why the deferred revenue is slightly less than the receivables. But the remaining one point eight million dollars that's in deferred revenues will be reported as revenues in future years when they get collected. Down in the bottom part of the page with the fund balances, the, the names of these fund balances has changed because of that same standard. That same Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Fifty-four, which now makes you put the capital reserve funds in this column. It also changes the names of the fund balances, but I'll explain what's in each of these in your general fund. In the, the first of them, which is the committed fund balance of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one thirty-six, that's the offset to those capital reserves. So those are your capital reserve balances. After that is assigned fund balance, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven eighty-two, those are encumbrances. Those are, uh, articles and, uh, open purchase orders for your two thousand and eleven budget. Where the monies haven't been fully spent, but are being carried forward into two thousand and twelve to be spent. Then that leaves the remaining balance of unassigned fund balance, three million, four sixty-eight, two sixty. This used to be called the undesignated fund balance, and if, if you recall in past presentations, I always said that. That's probably the most important number in these financial statements, the bond rating agencies pay close attention to that number. Presented on this basis of accounting, which is generally except the accounting principles, a modified accrual basis. The bond rating agencies like that unassigned fund balance to be anywhere between five and ten percent of your budget. And, and your budget being just the town's budget, that number on a, on a accrual, on a modified accrual basis. Is actually nineteen point seven percent of your budget, so the bond rating agencies would look at that and say that's a very, very strong fund balance. The, um, Department of Revenue Administration, New Hampshire G F O A, looks at it a little bit differently. Because they, they take that three point four million dollars and they actually add the deferred revenue balance to that. So that one point eight million dollars that's sitting in the liabilities, they, the Department of Revenue looks at your, your fund balance. They, they look at your property taxes, and whether you collect them or not, they consider them part of your fund balance. Because they figure you're ultimately going to collect those dollars, you might not have the cash in hand right now, but you will collect it. So they would take that three point four million in the unassigned, they would add the one point eight million dollars to it. And then they would, uh, subtract out an allowance for doubtful accounts. And there is a footnote that appears on page thirty-eight that provides a reconciliation that gets from the numbers on page thirteen. To the numbers the Department of Revenue would be looking at, Department of Revenue number, when you add and subtract all the different components. Would be about four million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Now, the New Hampshire G F O A suggests that that number, when compared to the overall budget. Which includes the school district and the county and the town, that that number be about, uh, eight to seventeen percent of your budget. That number, as it appears right now, is about eleven point three percent, so you're, you're right in the middle of a very strong fund balance. The way that the New Hampshire G F, G F O A and Department of Revenue would be looking at it. So regardless of whether you're looking at your fund balances from a fund accounting basis. Or on a full accrual, which is the way the Department of Revenue would be looking at it, it's a very strong fund balance. That three point four million presented on a fund accounting basis, the number that appears here on page thirteen. It's actually increased from the prior year by about, uh, by about seven hundred thousand dollars. And that's a trend that's been going on for the past five years, that fund balance has been going up for the past five years. It's been a very strong financial position, I don't know whether you need to build any more than you have right now, you probably don't. You could probably start looking at, uh, possibly using some of that as a funding source. The bond rating agencies, when, when, when considering using some of your fund balance. They would prefer that you use it for one-time-only type projects, construction-type projects, and, and not just as a, as a revenue to reduce your tax rate. Because if you start using it as a revenue to reduce your tax rate, it may not be rebuilt in the future, and it may not be there in the future. But you're, you're in a very good position right now that you, you could probably, uh, afford to use some of that for projects if you wanted to.
Frank, is there, um, a certain range of, of use of fund balance that would still leave us with a. Um, percentage that would be, I guess, I guess highly sought after in terms of a rating agency?
Well, a year ago, when I met with you, and the balance in it at that point was about two point seven million dollars. And I think I told you last year, I thought it was in a strong financial position, so, you know, there's a, I'd say at least seven hundred thousand dollars would get you back to where you were a year ago.
Okay.
The Selectman's policy, financial policy is to maintain a ten percent, so we're over the ten percent.
You're over the ten percent, you're at a eleven point three percent.
Which is about seven hundred thousand?
Uh, it would be, the, the denominator, when you include the, the school district and the county and the town, is forty-three million dollars. So about four point three million, and right now you're at four point nine million, so about six hundred thousand dollars. The, um, next page is, is page fifteen that I. Had something to mention on there, and really just one point, in the first column, the third number up from the bottom, seven hundred and sixty thousand, four thirty-eight. That's the excess of revenues over expenditures, uh, for a business, this would be your net income for the year. So your, your revenues beat your expenses in your general fund by seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so that's a very positive thing. And when we go to the next page, which is page seventeen, we'll see where that came from. Page seventeen is the budget versus actual for your general fund. And it presents the budget in two columns, original budget and the final budget, and they're actually the, the same numbers, the, you had the same budget. Beginning of the year as you did at the end of the year, the actual amounts in the third column come from the previous page, the in- income statement. But they get adjusted slightly, um, and, and example of that would be the last of the revenue. So in the middle of the page, right above the subtotal for total revenues and other sources, you'll see, there's a line that says use of fund balance, a hundred thousand dollars. So you actually used a hundred thousand dollars of fund balance during two thousand and eleven. Fund balance is not really a revenue, on the previous page, that didn't get included as revenue. Because whenever you use some of your fund balance, it's monies that are earned in prior years, not in the current year. But for this page, for comparative purposes, it gets included in here as an actual revenue, yep.
What, what accounted for, um, it says penalties, interest and other taxes, and that was, that was a pretty substantial variance there.
Um, one of the things that get included in there, which would fall into the category, I guess, of the other taxes. Is, um, a, a, a one-time betterment for the Dannis Park, the.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was, uh, that was the majority of, of that revenue. If you look at the, the subtotal appearing below that, so the, for the total revenues and other sources in that right-hand column. The revenues beat the budget by three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars, and, and. the revenues beat the budget by 357,546, and the majority of that is that line you were referring to. Beyond that, there weren't a lot of revenue surpluses there. And down on the bottom part of the page, total expenditures and other uses, the subtotal is 153,942. These are the turnbacks. These are the amounts that the departments did not spend or encumber at the end of the year, the closeouts. So those added to your surplus. So on the expense side, the turnbacks were 153,000. On the revenue side, up above, the subtotal is 357,000. So in all, the town beat the budget by 511,488, that number in the bottom right-hand corner. So it was a very positive year, again, as the town's experienced in the past few years. This is one more year of a positive operating results. After this, the next page, on page 18, is your sewer fund.
Can I just?
Sure.
I just want to make sure that, I know you understand it, but for those of the people who might watch this, correct me if I'm wrong, Sue, but when we talk about, you know, beating our budget with a 20 roughly, our budget was what, 19 or 20 million dollars roughly?
Okay.
We spent all but 153,000, 154,000, which would probably be like 98, 99% of that budget. And then in terms of the revenues, we estimate revenues, and that's an area, with the exception of the Danus Park betterment, where we got that right by about, close to, I'm going to say, if I subtract that out, about 70 to 80,000. So we budgeted pretty tight. We still fell within our budget due to the fact that we had some things that we didn't expend, and then we had some revenues that were a little tad better than what we had, but by and large. I mean, for us, it was, this has been extremely challenging. I'm sure most municipalities have felt that same way. But it's pretty, it's pretty tight, yeah.
The numbers are not large. Other than that one-time revenue, the revenues, you wouldn't have had large turnbacks. And on the appropriation side, that's less than 1% turnback.
Yeah, so, okay.
Now, those Lynchville-Danus Park revenues, though, don't offset a general fund.
Right.
Because that goes towards the debt.
With the paid debt on that.
Correct. You received one-time betterment payments for those that chose to pay.
Upfront.
Upfront. But that's going to be paid over time to the City of Manchester, so.
Right.
It's in the general fund now, but it will be paid out over future years.
Right.
Yeah. And more than likely, we're not going to see a similar number, because people did that as a one-time deal.
Right. They're given one opportunity to do that.
Right. I'm sorry, Frank.
The next page is the sewer enterprise fund. And generally accepted accounting principles require that enterprise funds be presented on the full accrual basis of accounting, just like the entity-wide, the first couple pages that we talked about. So on this page, there are long-term assets and long-term liabilities that are reported here. The first line on the top, cash and short-term investments, 2.6 million. That, I mentioned earlier, that for your general fund, it's not necessarily a good indicator. But for your sewer enterprise fund, I think it's a pretty good indicator as to where you stand. That basically represents your surplus. Your sewer operations have a positive cash balance of about 2.6 million, and it's a very healthy balance. It has been a very healthy balance for the past few years. The long-term assets are reported in the middle of the page, a couple lines up from the total assets. You'll see capital assets with two categories, land construction in progress, and then other assets of 5 million. There's not a lot of long-term liabilities for your sewer operations, about seven or eight lines up from the bottom. Bonds payable of 350,000, that's the long-term portion. Then above that, you'll see another 130, which is what's going to be paid down in 2012. So the bonds that have been out there for the sewer are coming to a close. There's just another, probably three years remaining to pay those down. And those will be paid off, and you're left with a pretty strong cash balance and a strong equity balance. If we look at the next page, which is the income statement for your sewer, I'll turn your attention to the third number up from the bottom, change in net assets, 721,705. For businesses, would be your net income, but there is a real reason for that. If you go up a few lines from that, you'll see a very large revenue, sort of in the middle of the page, intergovernmental revenue, Those are the state era funds, well, the federal era funds, that came in during 2011. Most of those monies were actually expended in the prior year. But for whatever they get spent for, they get capitalized as an asset. So the revenues, when they come in, show up as a revenue, but the expenses don't show up as an expense that would offset those revenues. Instead, they get capitalized as an asset, and they're going to be depreciated over their useful lives. So that really means that 721,000 of net income, that third number up from the bottom, was really inflated because of that state money, that era money that came in during the year. And had it not been there, it would have been a loss of about 250,000 or so. Which isn't an alarming area of concern for the sewer enterprise fund, because there are reserves there. And I think the sewer department has been using some of its reserves to draw down for some of these projects. So your sewer fund remains in a very strong financial position. After this, on page 21, I'll just point out what page 21 is all about. This is another balance sheet, statement of fiduciary net assets. The first column is private purpose trust funds, and these are scholarship trust funds that the trustees of the trust funds are holding. Those have to be reported separately. And in the agency column, the second column, those are performance bonds that the town is holding for other people. So there is no net assets. It's other people's money, so it's all showing up as a liability. The last page in these financial statements I was going to discuss is towards the back, page 44. And this is for your emergency medical services, your EMS services, which is a special revenue fund that gets budgeted. And because it gets budgeted, there's a budget versus actual presentation here. The top part of the page is the revenue side, and if we focus way to the right-hand column, looking at that subtotal for total revenues, the revenues beat the budget by 43,861. And then right below that is the expenditures. So the turnbacks were 47,582. So again, that represents what was budgeted but not spent or encumbered at the end of the year. So it was closed out. So overall, the budget was a favorable year, the bottom right-hand number, 91,443, which reverts into this EMS fund balance, which is tracked in the special revenue funds. And those monies will be available for future appropriation.
But Sue, we have to be cognizant of that number, simply because when we want to buy an ambulance, that's where we're going.
I believe in 2011, we did buy an ambulance, correct? And that's why that number's so high on terms of the budget, 610,000. There was an ambulance purchase that year.
Follow-up on that, though. This 91,433 represents one year.
It represents one year.
But this is not the total that's in the fund.
Correct.
Correct.
So this money that goes into the fund, really what we're looking at is the fund's been increased.
Correct.
By 91,443.
And similar to that, the last of the revenues, the third line of the revenues, use of fund balance, 238,000. That's the amount that was earned in prior years that was used this year to make a purchase.
Correct.
So you used 238,000, you were able to rebuild another 91,443 to go back into that fund balance.
Yeah, I mean, the reason why, I was curious, was because, obviously, we look at our rates, and this is the monies that go into paying for our ambulance replacements and equipment, so.
That summarizes the numbers in the financial statements. Overall, everything looks very strong. Your general fund fund balance is in a very good condition. Your sewer enterprise fund has a very strong fund balance. Your budget versus actual, your general fund was more of a tighter year this year, but the numbers still came out positively, and your EMS services also came out positive. So you had a pretty good year this past year financially.
All right. If I may, Don and Evelyn, would you mind just coming up for a quick second?
Yeah, I have a question.
Before I get to your question, you know, these types of results, I don't think they happen, you know, without a lot of hard work. And in the past, we've been very fortunate, you know, to have clean reports, and this is yet another clean audit. And so I want to, and Don, this was a transition year. You've been our, you're not the old director anymore. You are the director, so, finance director. So I just want to thank you for continuing in the tradition that we've had. And it's been very challenging for the Board of Selectmen, Budget Committee, the community, to try to, you know, have a report such as this one. We certainly have our challenges ahead of us, but I think now, Frank, and you've kind of given us kind of a roadmap as to, we have a couple of different tools in our belt, obviously, one-time use of fund balance and/or a
Bonding?
Bonding opportunity, which it would appear with rather low interest rates may be an opportunity for us to address some of our expenditures that we have on the horizon in a prudent way. So before I get to your question, is there anything that you want to add with respect to the audit, Don?
I'd just like to add that a lot of the work is due to the excellent staff that I have. Evelyn and Linda and Renee and Gail do an outstanding job every day since I've been here. I need to give them most of the credit for this. I'd also like to compliment Melian and Heath. They're very good to work with. We've worked a lot with Brian McDermott. He's been excellent. He's very quick at returning phone calls if either myself or Evelyn or anyone has a question for them. They're responsive and courteous 100% of the time, and we really appreciate it.
Evelyn, you want anything? You're good?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
So I wanted to get onto one thing, and I thought it was important to touch base on this, especially for people that are in our viewing audience. As you mentioned, this is a transition year for our finance director. I mean, new, he's been around for a while now, Don Bora, who took over for Jan O'Connor, who had been for many years. But I think what I'm looking at, and I'm appreciative of, is the fact that this now is the third year, that in the auditor's letter, there are no recommendations.
Right.
And last year, that was a big thing, because it was two years in a row. And I brought up, and I asked you specifically, how many other communities in New Hampshire don't have a recommendation, and how many have gone two years in a row? And now we are here, well, we got to that. Evelyn was on board at the time. We've had the same administration. And on the Jan, we got to that point. And now we have Don here at the helm, and we've gone three years with that. So I think that that is to commend.
Right.
Everybody that's working here, and I can't be prouder. I mean, as a selectman in the town of Goffstown, to be able to say that we've gone three years in a row without a recommendation on the auditor's letter. So I have to just congratulate everybody.
Yeah, and I agree, especially in a transition year, you know, to go through without having a formal management letter, without any, you know, significant deficiencies. We did have a few areas where we made some recommendations to management, though. And it's because, being a small town, there tends to be segregation of duties issues sometimes. And so we made some recommendations to your management that they ought to look into documenting oversight over some of those departments to make sure that there is some segregation of duties occurring. The sewer department is one of them, recreation, tax collector, town clerk. They're all small departments without a lot of personnel. So we always make recommendations to get another set of eyes looking at things, so. But as far as the condition of the accounting records, when we come in to do the audit, the books are closed, numbers balanced, and very provable, and it makes the audit very efficient to perform. And your staff is all very cooperative to us also.
Thank you.
If I may, we're also implementing some of those suggestions already that Mr. Byron just mentioned. We're already doing it.
Good.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's approximately 7:05, and we're right on track, actually, with our town administrator's report.
I have a short report for you tonight. Your weekly meeting schedule is in your packets. I won't go through that. For your consensus folder tonight, you have an accounts payable manifest, 138,383.64, and a payroll withholding manifest of 147,414.2. You have employee status reports, retired crossing guard, and a new hire for call firefighter. You have event permit for Saint Anson College football games on September 14th, October 6th, October 13th, and October 26th, and a right to inter for the Hoffs and, I'm not going to pronounce that name, I'm not sure, I don't want to demolish it, for Shirley Hill Cemetery, Section 3, Lot 45A. And another one for Hoffer Shirley Hill Cemetery, Section 3, Lot 82.
So the motion to accept the consensus folder, there's a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Four zero, motion passes.
Thank you. And you don't have any correspondence this week. The police chief, I was talking to him today, is recommending that we continue our tradition of trick-or-treat hours, October 31st, which is a Wednesday this year, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., but it takes a vote of the board, too.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero.
Stop by the firehouses, we'll have plenty of candy for the kids this year.
Okay, so that
I did have one more item.
Okay.
Southern Hampshire Planning, Regional Planning Commission, and the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission, will be working together with all communities located in Hillsborough and Merrimack Counties to develop a comprehensive economic development strategy. I sent you an email earlier today with what I'm reading right now. At this time, they're seeking our municipality's participation in the development of the CEDS, and to formally appoint one representative from your municipality to the strategy committee. So my question to you would be, do you want to go forward and recruit someone to serve on this? And if so, what process do you want to use?
Make a suggestion?
Yes.
That perhaps we reach out to economic development to see if there's somebody there. And one of the other things, I'd like to get a little bit more information about the program.
There, did you get your email today?
Yes, I did. I mean, there's a lot to go through on that, and I did go through it. I understand a lot of things that are in there, but I just want to make sure that we have an understanding of what we're, not necessarily signing on to, but
What's the commitment is?
Well, and what it involves, and the reason why I say that is that we've had a couple of other things that we voted to go forward with, and I've received a lot of comments that were not so positive about us going forward with some of them. So I just want to make sure that we have a full understanding of.
Yeah, it seems like the carrot in this one is to obtain federal funding for public infrastructure projects.
Well
I don't know if it's a requirement, maybe the kickoff meeting will go into more detail on that.
I understand, but there's one general tie-in on a lot of the things that we've had. One of the tie-ins is, I have a concern that it could have an effect on what I consider some of the long-term things that have made Goffstown, Goffstown, for what it is. There seems to be a trend, and this is the type of a carrot, to try to get more type
There seems to be a, a trend, and this is the type of a carrot, to try to get more type of concentrated multifamily housing. It's, it's to reduce the, the, get more compact areas and, and affect the, the urban, the, 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 the larger, the larger plot, the larger properties that we have, they seem to be getting more condensed, things condensed, because they're looking at it, and they're saying that there's an efficiency of the scale here, so that if everybody has, you have, everything's within a walking distance, everything is within public transportation, your, your housing is going up rather than going, and using up more land. And I don't necessarily, and the comments and the feedback that I've gotten from members of the community, is that I just have a concern that Goffstown, a, a change that could be that's not made Goffstown the favorable community that's been.
Okay, so, so to summarize, the sentiment that you're hearing from some constituents is that the goals, or perhaps the vision of Southern New Hampshire Planning, or the grants which they're applying for, may not coincide with what some of our goals, aspirations, or values may be here in Goffstown? And we have to make sure that they at least somewhat align?
There, there's, there's a concern.
Okay.
You know, that, that there is a concern.
I just want to, I've heard similar comments from constituents myself, so I would concur with what you said. I think, for me personally, before signing on, I'd like to see specifically what are, you know, wha, what is the vision? What is the end game? Before, you know, we become a party to it? Because obviously, they're looking to have a mass of communities, so that it sells their vision, or maybe for a federal application, et cetera, it's more viable. But before we do that, I'd like to make sure that it aligns with what our master plan is, what our vision of our community is. Sleckman Adams?
Well, I guess I'd like some more detail. I mean, when you say you received a number of concerns from constituents, I mean, I don't know what that means. How many people, what are their concerns?
What I hear is very similar to what Sleckman DeVanzis said.
What I'm hearing, things specific.
Oh, but in terms of, you know, you know, case in point was the, the housing on, on Mast, on Mast Road, where I guess it was affordable or, or workforce-type, type housing, and.
Abington Square?
Yeah.
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 And, you know, some of the concerns that, that I had, that I have heard from, from folks was that, okay, we had a project that was initially going to be X percentage, say, residential, and I, I know locally now, we have made the decision to make it more of that and less, you know, commercial, which, which a lot of folks are concerned that it could be, be more of a drain on our services. But that's what I have, that's, that's what I've heard. Not so much, I haven't heard the building up versus, you know, building sideways, that thing, but I've heard that.
A lot of that gets, a lot of that gets into Agenda 21.
Okay. Other than that one project, are we hearing other than that? Or, I mean, because that doesn't seem to be a far overarching concern. I understand there's been a lot of debate about that whole project and the way it's played out versus the way it was presented initially, and how it was changed and modified over the years. But I mean, are we hearing anything other than that one project? Or is that what's, that tend to be the center of conversation?
Some, some express concerns as to Southern New Hampshire Planning and what their goals and vision is, is to, and it doesn't align with theirs, you know? Doesn't necessarily, it might not align with Goffstown's, it doesn't align with theirs. But that was, what, what, uh, you know, what I mentioned with Abington, you know, Square, that was, that was a bit of a, bit of a concern. That was it. And maybe it's just a communication thing, you know, where we have to just, you know, articulate, you know, what are the, you know, what are the continued benefits of being associated with Southern New Hampshire Planning, or any other entity in which we kind of leverage, we're able to leverage our size of our community and, and try to do things that are more regional in, in, in effort. Sleckman LeMay, have anything you want to weigh in on, on this?
No, I'm kind of open. I'd like to hear a little bit more, probably see what.
Okay. I mean, it's fair to say, we just got this this afternoon.
Correct.
And, and Chairman Pierce isn't here, so I think we can just, you know, put it on the next agenda, and then we can kind of deliberate on that a little bit more. I mean, I think historically, that we've, we've pretty much embraced a lot of the initiatives that Southern New Hampshire has, planning has come to us with, so. Any other new, any other business, Sue?
Yeah.
Okay. For the selectmen, is there any old business that you want to bring up? Not hearing any? Any new business? Not hearing any. And then lastly, we have two committee reports. The first is EDC.
We met last week. Our meeting was held on the 7th of August here at the Town Hall. We, again, in detail, discussed the business welcoming and mentoring program for the, for the towns and new businesses in town. We're trying to get to the new businesses, make sure, welcome them, make sure they're all set, see how they're doing, make sure that everything is okay. The Glen Lake Waterfront ordinance was discussed with the board as to allow, allowing different activities to have permits over at Glen Lake. That's still ongoing. The New Hampshire DOT I-293 Exit 6 and 7 Improvement Study was a, I guess, a comment or a question made that, should we contact Senator Lou Delisandro as to getting some assistance to see if we can get that extension to come up to the actual Gofftown back road instead of stopping it at Dunbatten Road where they, where they plan to stop it? That was, that was talked about. Do we want to ask him to see if he would possibly shed some light for the town of Gofftown to try to bring in the, you know, bring in that road a little bit further? I know Sue wrote the letter to Manchester this week. Thank you very much for doing that. Hopefully, that will open up some avenues. We, I explained that to the board as well, and the board is, is, is hopefully, you know, they feel very positive that we could open up the lanes of traffic that, knowing that we can have some commercial traffic there, and, you know, that might, that might be an added incentive to get that road to where, where it need be. That was pretty much it. New Hampshire DOT and the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission review of the rails and trails, transportation, they're having meetings on the September 4th, September 7th, 10th, and 14th at 9:00 a.m. They're going to review different parts and portions of the rails to trail, see what, see what's been done, and just get together and see what can be done. There was discussion about the work that, that has been done. They, they, they've commented that the trail is looking better all the time, it's getting better all the time, you know, with, with all the help and the grant money that's there. Looking forward to continuing the expansion of the rails to trails, so that we can continue, continue growing, whether it be north, southeast, or west, but it'd be nice to be able to leave here, go all the way to Manchester to the, to the stadiums like they talked about, and, you know, ride, ride your bikes or walks, or do things like that. That was pretty much it.
Any questions for Sleckman LeMay? Next is the Sewer Commission report.
Yeah, Sewer Commission met briefly on the 9th to talk about the 2013 budget, setting up a workshop next week or so to develop some of the line items for, for the 2013 budget. Talked about the interministerial agreement with the City of Manchester, and came up with a final flow number of 2.13, final draft. Reflecting that number's been submitted to the city for attorney review and submission to the Attorney General's Office for final approval. There's some discussion about Mast Road paving. We've already gone through that early in the meeting, so I won't reiterate what was talked about there. Starts the Reed Street and Temple Court sewer line replacement. Temple Court, unfortunately, has been delayed. There was a lot more ledge removal than expected, so they put that on hold and moved over to Reed Street, so that they could do that work, so as to avoid congestion at the Maple, Maple Ave intersection when school reopens. Then they'll switch back to Temple Court and finish that after Reed Street is completed. And then finally, on South Mast and Mast Road manholes, looking to replace some of those before final paving, obviously. Each one, just so you know, is about 250 bucks to, to adjust those and raise those. So, there's cost for about another $9,000 for that section of miscellaneous manholes. Steve Kreen didn't recommend repairing all the Mast holes. Mast Road manholes. Pardon me. Mast, Mast Road manholes, prior to paving, motion was made and seconded to, to complete that work. And that would take it just up to, says the Exxon station, but it's actually a Gulf station at this point, I believe. Kamauen Farms, it is a Gulf station, but, so, you know, replace and adjust those manholes up to that point.
All right. Any questions for Sewer? All right. Any other business? I have one, I just had one comment, I should have said it earlier. Occasionally, this past, I think it was this past week or a couple of weeks ago, we, we got, we, we get anonymous letters every once in a while to the Board of Selectmen or to administration. We typically do not respond to anonymous letters that are sent to Board of Selectmen or to the administration. And sometimes, there are, there could be very valid reasons why an individual wants to let the town know that, whether it be a vendor, or an employee, or they have some sort of an issue. It's, it's important, if, if something does bother a citizen, that they feel compelled to write a letter or to notify us. We would appreciate us being able to contact you and, and, and try to, you know, get the story straight, because if it is something that we do have to make an adjustment on, it's imperative that we have the right to gather more information. It's the only way that, that we can do it. So, I just want to let folks know that, you know, we, we, we read them, but we rarely can take, we, we can't take action more often than not, simply because it's on, it's only one's person's side of the story, so. That was that. Anything else? I'll accept a motion to adjourn by Sleckman DeVanzis. Sleckman Adams has a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.